All right, good evening and welcome to the Monday, July 7th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Sykesville Planning Commission. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of our June 2nd, 2025 meeting, which I assume everybody has had a chance to look at. Any comments, amendments, any issues with that? No, that being the case, then I move that we approve minutes of June 2nd, 2025. Do I have a second for that? Second is Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. Moving on, county updates. Claire isn't here, I'm guessing there's nobody going to present that in person. And I guess you've had the chance to read that, and that's available for anybody to read on the website. So moving very quickly to our business agenda, which is to consider, discuss, act upon an updated concept plan for the Warfield development. And I'm going to invite Kevin to present, Kevin and Joe, to present the staff report on that before we move any further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everyone had a nice July weekend. So the property owners, they've submitted an updated concept plan for the development of the Warfield properties. So looking at the land uses, the development parcel that is the subject of this submittal is a total of forty-seven point two acres and is located in the planned employment center zone. Development of the property must adhere to the land use percentages established in the Town of Sykesville zoning code, Chapter 180-139. The staff report provides a breakdown of the required and proposed land use percentages, the zone requirements of the PEC zone, and the development parcel size being proposed, so I'll quickly run through those. So for the office research, institutional hotel, and light industrial, you can forgive me for typing on hotel there, they are required to have a minimum of twenty percent of the land use, and this plan is showing twenty percent. For retail service uses, they have a minimum of ten percent of the overall development parcel. This plan is only showing five percent. For residential uses, it is a maximum of thirty-five percent, while this plan shows fifty-four percent. And then open space is a minimum of twenty-five. This plan, as presented right now, currently shows twenty percent of open space. PEC zone also requires all regulations to be included as part of the concept plan submitted. Instead of going through every single one, one by one, the vast majority of these are the same that are part of the approved concept and preliminary plan. It's also the pattern book and ones that we have seen before. So instead of just going through all of them, we'll jump down to the analysis where I do mention instead the ones that have changed. So the first one that's sort of changed, looking at minimum lot sizes for townhomes, they were reduced from one thousand four hundred square feet to one thousand one hundred twenty square feet for interior units, and then twenty-one hundred square feet down to one thousand four hundred seventy feet for end units. And then minimum lot width was reduced from twenty feet to sixteen feet for interior townhomes, and thirty feet to twenty-one for end units. There are no requirements for minimum lot area or width in the PEC zone. I just wanted to make sure the planning commission list will bear all of the changes that were being made. The maximum number of dwelling units per group of townhomes was increased from seven units to eight. And then a setback for front loaded townhomes was also added, which is not currently listed on the approved concept plan or in the pattern book. I also wanted to note that front loaded townhouses do contradict some of the traditional neighborhood design, traditional neighborhood design principles that are emphasized in the PEC section of the code, as well as the approved pattern book. These principles emphasize buildings that are located closer to public roadways or shielding parking loading areas from view as much as possible. There's also a couple of block standards that have been consistent, but we wanted to highlight them for clarity and just move forward. First being the maximum building height of six stories. So the PEC zone does mention a maximum building height of six stories, but there is no clear definition of story in the code, which can create some variability and confusion in the application of this standard. But there is the Warfield Commercial Center New Construction Design Guidelines and Standards for Signs, which is always a mouthful, but that does set a consistent and measurable standard of fifty feet for new buildings. Because these guidelines are referenced in both the PEC and Historic District sections of the town code, fifty feet should be the primary standard used for building height. This will help to minimize the possibility of confusion and ensure that new buildings are visually harmonious with the existing architecture and landscapes. And then lastly, there's a fifty-foot front or rear setback requirement for multifamily residential buildings, which has been consistent throughout. But we wanted to note that this orientation of residential buildings should be avoided whenever possible. Staff would prefer to see this standard potentially replaced with a note indicating that residential buildings will not be designed in a front to rear orientation. Moving on to land use and residential density. So the submitted concept plan proposes land use percentages that do not meet the requirements of the planned employment center zone. Adherence to these regulations, or adherence to the regulations established in the PEC zone are mandatory for any concept plan to move forward. If the applicants intend to pursue a project with the land use percentages presented in this plan, they must first submit a zoning text amendment or request an attorney counsel for consideration, or the applicant will need to submit a new concept plan showing compliance with all requirements of the PEC zone. The applicants have expressed a belief that there is an alternative to modifying the zoning code. They would allow their current approach to move forward. It was mentioned that this alternative would require a recommendation from the planning commission and would likely or potentially be presented during tonight's meeting. At the time of distributing the staff report, staff had not received any additional details of what that alternative action was. We did receive a correspondence after distribution of all this information, touching on that alternative action, but we haven't had a chance to really review the contents of that correspondence that provided a sort of adequate analysis for the recommendation of the planning commission at this time. Additionally, this plan is showing two different development, two different parcel sizes rather than calculating land use percentages and the residential density. However, the PEC zone bases both calculations on the same metric of total development parcel size, which means that a minimum, a single inconsistent total development parcel size should be used for all calculations of land use percentages and residential density. Finally, a few additional comments that staff wanted to note for the bring to planning commission's attention. One is, staff's concerned with parcel D2 being listed or shown as the only location for the retail service use. We would encourage the developers to consider areas of higher traffic and greater accessibility for the general public. Some alternative suggestions could be parcel A, all of parcel A, as well as some parcel C along the traffic circle and Spring Thio Avenue. Both parcels could utilize mixed use buildings to comply residential and retail service uses. Staff is also curious why Cary Dorsey Park is removed from the open space calculation of the plan since continuous tracks of open space are recommended, rather than the fractured approach being shown on the plan. And it's also unclear how recreational space requirements for the PEC zone will be met with the current proposal. Finally, the land use percentages on parcel DNF were changed from being solely residential on the approved concept and preliminary plan to now including open space in the calculation for that parcel. Staff doesn't feel this is a permissible change since all the proposed development has already occurred on that parcel, and the applicants no longer own that parcel. So with all that being said, based on the submitted concept plan, the issues outlined in the preceding analysis, staff would recommend the planning commission deny the proposed concept plan this evening, allowing for the applicant to submit a new concept plan for consideration at the next planning commission meeting or any meeting following. Specifically, staff finds that the proposed land use percentages and the application of two different development parcel sizes makes this plan inconsistent with the basic requirements of the town's zoning code. Staff further recommends that the planning commission request that any future concept plans submitted excludes changes to the use percentages on parcel DNF, indicates how the recreational space requirement in the PEC zone will be met, and explores alternative locations for retail slash service uses. Staff would also encourage the planning commission to withhold consideration on any proposed alternative processes until staff and will also have an opportunity to analyze the suggestion. There is a suggestive motion included in the staff report. The planning commission wishes to use it. Other than that, that's all I have at this time. I believe the applicants would like to present.
Gentlemen, please feel free.
Good evening. For the record, Stephen McLeif with Warfield Companies. I'd like to introduce the team. My far right, you all know Roger Conley. Dave Bowersox with Hoffman Comfort. And Sean Davis with Morrison Ritchie, associate, our land planner. First thing I wanted to cover is, there was a specific request of me at the last meeting to provide market studies and other studies that we had. And I provided those on 5/29, wanted to make sure everybody got those and had a chance to review. I know it was a lot, lot to look at. And we're not going to be covering any of the material in there tonight, but as always, happy to address questions about the market fiscal and economic impact and the like. One other thing I'd like to point out, and one thing that our team's going to try to do tonight, is, is address some of the concerns, issues presented in the staff report. One of the, one of the challenges of this process that, you know, the first meeting and this meeting is, we haven't had the benefit of staff meetings, meetings with staff, which we would usually have, to, to iron out a lot of the questions that are coming up now. And so we'll do our best and ask that you bear with us, but understand the constraint that not having, when an applicant doesn't meet with staff before a meeting, before a meeting like this, it creates some inefficiencies and some issues being responsive to requests. Tonight, you're going to have two people speaking to you. Sean Davis is going to start. He is going to review the revised concept plan. And as I, as I mentioned, try to adjust, try to address some of the staff comments in particular around the percentage of land uses. And then Dave Bowersox will discuss the letter that was provided last week to staff. It was not provided earlier because specifically, that, that letter actually addresses comments that were made after we left on the May 5th meeting, that we didn't have an opportunity to respond to, including public comment. And, and some of the comments at the, I think it was the June 17th workshop. So, you know, Dave's going to walk through that, that letter. That letter was provided more as a courtesy and as reference to make maybe his presentation a little bit, a little bit easier. So with that, Sean.
In the corner?
Sean, before you start, can I, can I just correct something? It was said just now that this was a continuation of our May meeting. We don't feel this is a continuation of our May meeting. This is the first meeting to discuss a new plan. This is not a continuation of that meeting. This is the first meeting of what could be a two-meeting process, but this is not the second meeting.
Can I get it clarified? I didn't, did I say continuation or? Okay, could you tell me why this isn't the?
Second meeting.
Second meeting.
Do you want to read that out?
So I think what you had stated was that we had the first meeting and now this meeting, indicating that it's two separate meetings.
That's, that's, okay.
But if you look at all the information that's been issued in connection with House Bill 538, which is what you're referencing, it says a meeting that takes across, takes place across multiple days will count as a single meeting if it is considered a single meeting under procedures. And so that's what the chairman is saying, is that this is not a second meeting. This is a continuation of the May meeting.
Okay. I think that's all, I, I just want to make sure because I think.
Yeah, it's different.
Chair said that this was the first meeting.
Repeat that again.
A meeting that takes place across multiple days will count as a single meeting if it is considered a single meeting under existing procedures for the body holding the public hearing. And if you recall, in May, that's what was stated, is that we were going to continue the meeting to give you an opportunity to amend the concept.
That's a little different.
It is different from my understanding, Sean. I will, I will, I also have a legal opinion.
That's great.
So were you guys saying the same thing? Because I thought you were saying something.
I was originally the non-noone.
Okay, and I, just for the, for the record, I don't know if we agree with counsel, but just please make that.
All right. So, in accordance with our original submission back in May, the purpose of this concept plan amendment is to take advantage of the opportunities provided by the Housing Expansion and Affordability Act. That's the whole purpose of the revisions to the concept. And we had, we presented a plan back in May, and we recognize and appreciate the commission's concerns and comments regarding that. The purpose of that was to specifically meet land use percentages within the letter of the law, although from a practical standpoint, we recognize that it was not necessarily the most practicable solution for that. We had a good discussion back in May, and we walked away believing that you wanted us to take a look at the net developable area. In fact, I think it's even stated as the net area. So we came back, I mean, in the town's original comments, there was this specific discussion regarding roads. You can't use roads because you don't own them, you can't build on it. Well, we don't own, nor can we build on Cary Dorsey Park. Although we own parcel G, D1, the stormwater management facility, we can't build on it because it's currently used as a stormwater management facility. So we took all of those out of the consideration for the land use percentages, not for density or anything else, but just to bear down on the land use percentages, which is what we had taken away from our last meeting in May. Okay? And that's what this plan represents. This plan says, okay, no Cary Dorsey Park, no road right of ways, no D, D1G. Those are all out. So we have forty-seven plus or minus net acres. Now, what do these land use percentages mean? And so we identified that we believe that it's an excellent opportunity for the existing auditorium dining hall to be used as a retail service opportunity, as kind of a centerpiece for potential future residential in parcel D and the existing office in D1. And then generally, from a community standpoint, we believe that there's a great opportunity for a farm-to-table with opportunity for sales of farm goods in there. And so that's why we had identified the building size, the floor plan, so on and so forth, meet that requirement that we believe is, is appropriate. The historic aspects of it could add a lot of panache. There's very similar instances where this has happened. Bill number one in Baltimore City is a great example, where they've used a portion of the historic building for a restaurant and farm-to-table and along with retail sales. The second thing is that, although I understand your planner's recommendation regarding parcels ENF, this is not, this is the reality of parcels ENF based on the actual subdivision of ENF. The areas that you see here in green are the technical open spaces in the subdivision for parcels ENF. We're not changing anything. We're just basically taking into account the reality and the evolution from our concept plan to the actual final subdivision plans. These meet the requirements stipulated for open space in your code. Okay? So, and they are open spaces. There's the tot lot, this is the Village Green, these are the open space mews, so on and so forth. We haven't taken all of the open space within that into consideration, only those which we believe meet your open space requirements. So if we go through that, and we look at the land use percentages that Kevin went through, and we agree with all of them, that the office research were required twenty percent, we need twenty percent. Retail service were required, minimum of ten percent, this shows five percent. On the residential side, the maximum we can provide is thirty-five percent, this shows fifty-four percent. And on the open space, were required eleven point eight, and we're showing nine point six five. We believe as parcels A, C, and D mature, as parcel ENF did, that we'll be able to meet the eleven point eight acres without any question or problem. And we would have a condition.
Can I just stop you for a second? The fifty-four percent clearly doesn't meet our current land use percentage.
That's correct.
And you do understand that this body doesn't have the power to change that. It's the council that has the power to change that.
Well, we'll talk about that separately with Mr. Bowersox, but in terms of meeting the plan, we're presenting you with what we believe you had requested, okay? And in terms of taking out all of the unbuildable area. Now, from my standpoint, and since we submitted this, we have been talking about it. And we think if our May submission was on one side of the spectrum, and this submission is on the other side of the spectrum, that there is a really good, happy medium, okay?
Yep.
And that medium is actually pretty simple. It's to take the parcels that you see here, and we can debate the open space in ENF, but for the purposes of this, let's just eliminate, accept your comment that we're not going to change this. But if we were to take all the parcels here and input them onto the 2016 approved concept plan. This plan, keeping what was then Warfield Park, now Cary Dorsey Park, keeping the sixteen point eight acres of road right of way as a separate use, not associated with residential, office, anything. It was specifically called out separately in 2016. That the acreages will become a lot clearer. For example, if we do that, if we were to take those parcels from our most recent submission and drop them onto this, here's how the percentages would work out. Office research institutional, we would have eleven percent, or required twenty. On the retail service, we'd have three percent, or required ten. On the residential, it'd be dropped down to twenty-eight percent, under the thirty-five percent. And in the open space, we would have forty percent, or thirty-six point five. So it's just a matter of, okay, the plan that was before you today says, well, we met the office, office, open space, or the office employment, hotel, institutional category at the twenty percent, but we're under, on the retail, we're over on the residential. If we do this, then the residential's under, the open space is good, the employment's under, and the retail's under, which would comport with the market studies that we provided you, that we've always known, which is that the office and retail markets are not strong. And so that to us is a legitimate compromise between the original plan that we submitted in May and the plan that we have today, and it goes back to this. It alleviates or eliminates the questions and concerns regarding the two land uses or total acreages that are being talked about versus gross versus net, and so on and so forth.
We can have another discussion on another day about whether retail and commercial is viable or not. Okay, that's another, that's a discussion on another day. I don't want to get into that tonight. But you still understand that we're still operating from the original PEC language and zoning match. We're not operating from some compromise. We are not the ones that can decide on that compromise. The town council is the body that has to change the zoning.
So if there are any questions regarding the land use stuff, I'd be more than happy to come back up. But I think based on that comment, it's probably appropriate to turn it over to Mr. Bowersox, so that he can go through his discussion on that. Okay?
Mr. Bowersox, since we didn't get the letter in time for it to be distributed here, we're not going to, I don't want to, to consider alternative, legal alternatives when we don't have the power to, to, to deal with those legal alternatives. We haven't seen that letter, so.
Well, that's not the only thing the letter addresses.
Okay.
But just understand too, the, the letter was not, first off, we, we had, we had requested a recording of that meeting right after the meeting happened and didn't receive it. Okay? Until today. We wrote that response, response not as, as, as part of our package, but as something to aid tonight's presentation, so, and it covers more than just that issue. So the issue of a submission two weeks prior to a planning commission meeting shouldn't get in the way. This is merely an aid and, and present, and something to present the record.
Okay, well, we'll see how that goes.
I haven't seen the letter. I don't think that the town, qua town, is prepared to address any new legal arguments that could have been submitted at the time that they submitted their, either their original concept plan or the subject it was, or the amended concept plan. And I'm not object to the letter.
So. Whether, whether or not you object to the letter, Mr. Bowersox.
I am speaking.
Just hang on, hang on a second. Let her finish.
Okay? And, and to the extent that there are legal arguments in it, to the extent that the board is inclined to address any of them, we would request a continuation of this hearing, to be entitled to do that. I'm just scanning it. I can see that there is content in this letter that they knew about more than a month ago, that they could have shared if that was intended to be a part of the basis for their request for approval, but dropped it on us, as I understand it, at the last minute on Thursday before holiday weekend. And I would submit to you that that was deliberate and consistent.
So, Mr. Bowersox, we are not going to address tonight the legality of some kind of workaround to our current, to our current regulations. We're not going to address that as a, as a meeting tonight. If you want to, to, to comment upon what was said at that meeting, then by all means do that.
Why don't you hear me out with what this is?
Okay.
This is submitted as a courtesy. Because at the May 5 meeting and June 17 work session, there are lots of questions about legal principles involved in the here. At the end of the May 5, a presentation, we excuse ourselves. We know there was subsequent public comment after that. This is just an opportunity to present you with our comments to those comments, which we were not here for. I have to say, I take umbrage, Ms. Levann, you and I have known each other a long time, to suggest that this is an intentional delay. That's not the case. And, and let's take this a step further. To suggest that we are springing newly discovered information. Now fourteen months after the Housing Expansion Affordability Act was adopted by the legislature, that's a reach. This has been out for fourteen months. I think it was May 8th, 2024.
And your point about that is exactly what I'm not sure what the point you're making about.
Well, the suggestion that we're trying to surprise you with new information, that's, that's, that's not what I'm doing.
It's not really about the information, it's about the intent and what we're actually doing with it. What do you want us to do with it?
I said, it was, as indicated, it, it's a courtesy. That's all. I'm going to start. It's yours, do with it what you want. It's submitted in good faith, as a courtesy, to help guide discussions that your last two meetings have been mostly consumed.
It's not. Right, it's one meeting. We're dealing with a May meeting, with the May 5 meeting.
On the 17th, you had a work session.
We did have a work session.
It was a work session, and it was staff presenting the House bill to the planning commission.
And there were lots of questions and discussion.
There were, but it wasn't a meeting relating to your concept plan. It wasn't a meeting directly related to this at all.
No, not at all.
So I don't, the way you're characterizing it seems like it's a, it's a work session about the plan. And I just want to make clear, it was not.
It's a work session about 538. That's what it was.
And what other plans do you have in the Town of Sykesville that are implicated by?
We did not discuss, we've not discussed any specifics about the plan. That was not the intention of the meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, that's an erroneous comment. I, I think this needs to be pointed out. That meeting was not about that concept.
Right. Let's go back to your May 5 staff report. I think many of the comments that you mentioned in the May 5 staff report were addressed at May, on the 5th of May, when we made our presentation. And also, you have talked about them to some extent at your work session. I just want to clarify, at page four, you said the application does not clearly. I just want to clarify, at page four, you said the application does not clearly articulate how the provisions of the act apply to the Warfield side, or how the applicant intends to implement them, referring to the HEA Act. Staff recommends the Planning Commission requests clarification from the applicant regarding the relevance and intended implementation. I would note, again, not a surprise, note five on the plan does and has included a specific reference to the HEA Act. Your, that comment continues.
I'm sorry, can you just point out where you are? Sorry.
Where I am?
On the document.
You're referencing the document. Page four, recommendation, May fifth, Planning Commission, staff report. It continues. Staff advises the Commission request a written explanation from applicant, detailing the applicability and proposed implementation.
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing.
It's a staff report.
On the May fifth staff report.
May fifth staff report.
Sorry, I thought you were referring to the letter.
No, 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 I'm, yeah.
Thank you.
God forbid. Detailing, the staff advises Commission request a written explanation from the plaintiff, detailing applicability and proposed implementation of HEA five thirty-eight in relation to the Warfield side of the P E C district. Well, like it or not, the letter you just got does that. We modified the plan as Mr. Davis has gone through. The one thing that I was struck by favorably during the May fifth proceedings was Chairman Singleton, your recognition that your master plan was somewhat, this is not your words, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, was somewhat at odds with the P E C code, which is also at odds with the H E A A. Your master plan, the two thousand thirty plan, talks about working collaboratively to achieve flexibility, and your comments included comments to the extent that it required a need of renegotiation, and again, I'm paraphrasing, of land use percentages.
Right. That's not controversial, that's me speaking, okay? That's my, my take on that, I'm one voice in this, and I don't, I'm not an elected official here, okay?
I get it. And I want to make one thing clear. I'm not here looking for a fight. I'm trying to help. I'm trying to facilitate this discussion. Anybody who knows me knows, that's not my MO. So I'm sorry if I have put some people here tonight on guard, but that's not my intention.
Okay.
Now, we do believe there is another way to proceed, but what we'd like to do is see if there's a way that we can resolve the question of the land use percentages, as Mr. Davis has mentioned. We believe if you adopt his suggestion to basically go back and use the other method, which is, I think, a denominator of ninety point five seven acres, that gets us to percentages that are, some clearly acceptable, some need some work.
Can I stop you there?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking personally again, okay, I'm chairman of the Commission, I'm not speaking for the town, I'm speaking as one voice on this Commission.
Yes.
I've read five three eight, I've attended the work session, I've read through all the F A Qs that are on the website, I've tried to make sense of it as best I can, and I understand that as a town, we will have to address its spirit and intent. Some of that is deeply vague. You know, there are very specific percentages which are given for other elements of five three eight which don't apply to the historic properties, it's something which is difficult to interpret, and it may end up somewhere in, for some legal opinion, somewhere in some deliberation, I don't know about that. My personal opinion is that right now, it's like the old joke where there's someone needs to get to London, and he stops by an old farm gate with an old farmer, says, do you know the way to London? And he says, well, if I was going there, I wouldn't start from here. And that's where we are at this particular point, because we are not, this body can't make that decision. We can't make that decision. We can't change the land use percentages, we can't change the P E C language. The only body that can do that is the town council.
So I hear what you're saying.
So here's what needs to happen. I think there's a very strong case for increasing the residential density percentage, there's a very strong case for language which now precludes residential development on certain parcels to be changed. We don't change that, we might have to make a recommendation at some point, but it's not our role to do that. We're not going to do that tonight. What needs to happen is that there needs to be either an application, a petition to the town council on your part to change those land use percentages, or we can do it as a body. But right now, what we're working for, from, is impossible for us to give an affirmative answer to what you want us to do, because we don't have the power to do it, and that's where we stand.
But you do have the power to recommend to the town council.
We have the power to recommend to the town council, but there's a step, there's a step that needs to go before that.
What's that?
The step that needs to go before that is a petition to change the land use percentages and the language that we have in our, in our town code. That's my understanding, and that's my understanding of the legal position that we're in. Now, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm trying to do it right, and I'm trying for this body to do it right.
Suffice it to say that we think the additional step of the text amendment could constitute an unreasonable restriction under the HEA Act.
I'll be legally advised about that, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know. I personally think, based on what I've read, it could be, but nobody knows what an unreasonable restriction is, because it's not specified in there. So what your unreasonable restriction would be might not be mine, might not be anybody else's, because that language is not specified. And as a linguist, I would send it away and say revise for clarity, because it's not there.
Well, there is, there's very little precision anywhere in any of the codes, but it's our position that that could be, in fact, depending on a number of factors, and unreasonable. And the reason we suggested is, we believe there is another means of addressing them, similar to the way we would typically address setbacks, dimensional percentages, et cetera, under your ordinance as it exists, so.
My understanding is that it will require a separate body to make a decision about it to this body.
Has, to the best of your knowledge, has the town, since the adoption of the HEA Act last May, made inquiries with the Department of Housing and Community Development for clarification on that issue?
That would not be something that I would be party to at this point, so I can't answer that question.
Do we know who would?
I can put that over to staff, can you stay here?
Yes, we've had several conversations with the Department of Community Development about it, specifically the implementation of it, and most of the responses have been, the courts will have to finger that out.
And it specifically says in there, they will not act as an ombudsman. What you have is what's written there, and what's written there is maybe clear to you in a different way, it's clear to me. That's why it's not a very, very, you know, useful piece of legislation at this point, because it lacks clarity. So that's where we stand. We cannot approve this plan as it stands tonight, because it doesn't meet the land use requirements that we, as a body, are required to work from. And until that changes, then that's always going to be the answer. Do I think that there's a strong case for changing that personally? Absolutely I do, yeah.
So there was a recommendation in the report that denied. Are you saying if that were to happen, and I'm not advocating for it obviously, it would be because of the language of your code, the P E C code?
Indeed, so, I believe so at this point, that's one of the reasons, but that would be the major reason, yeah. And until that language changes, we're bound by that language, as you know, we've got to work from the town co, we've got to work from the stipulations of the master plan, although that's a little bit more fluid, in terms of this language and its interpretation. But we don't have the ability to step around those regulations as a body tonight.
And frankly, I think where there is a disconnect is, we don't think you have to.
Okay, well, I'm advised by our council, and I would be remiss not to be, and that's where we stand right now.
I am encouraged to hear that one comment, that you're remiss not to be, because it's not always the case.
Okay.
The, yeah, we believe this is ripe for resolution by way of a variance. Your code specifically is very broadly defined in what you can get a variance for. It's not unlike other codes, everyone's a little different, and it seems to fall within the ambit of what the state code would allow. It's a more simplified process. The other practical problems with a text amendment is, while we are the only, Warfield's the only project with a H E A A qualified project footprint, there's another property in the P E C. They're not here tonight, so you would be changing an entire zoning, an entire zone, I should say, for the sake of this plan.
Well, we might have to do that. I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm taken advisement, we might have to do that.
I get it, and I appreciate that, I truly do.
And in all fairness, when they, when another developer came to this body and asked, hey, can we have, can we work with you to develop a plan to do X, Y, Z outside of the P E C, we told them to do the same thing.
And they did?
And they did.
Well, yeah, this is the only HEA project you've got, so.
I guess I, real quick, I'll join you for a second. I would also wonder if a conditional approval could be granted on this, where the approval would be granted subject to getting V Z A approval of a variance?
No, I don't think so, because I think we're still bound by what we're bound by, and what we're bound by is the text. It's, the text hasn't changed, and until the text's changed, we can't approve, conditionally or otherwise, I don't think that's an option.
So.
You can, if we vote against this tonight, if we do, because of the land use percentages, it doesn't mean you can't come back with the same plan, essentially the same plan, as long as, as long as those things have been changed. But I don't really see a way forward until those land use percentages have been changed.
So just to make sure that we're talking, if you, if the Commission decides to deny this application tonight, you're denying the application in all the discussions that we've had here today, so that if we were to go and bring this to an appeal, including the potential modifications to this plan, the potential application of an alternative through the zoning board of the, the Board of Zoning Appeals, so that when we, if we appeal your decision, that all of those issues are ripe for the zoning board of the, the Board of Zoning Appeals deliberations and discussions.
Chair?
Yeah, please.
I would vigorously oppose any suggestion that you are denying it on the basis of the merits of anything that's in this letter. The only thing that's in front of you is what they submitted to you previously. If you are, if there is some suggestion that the, all of these issues are ripe for appeal, well, I want an opportunity to address them, and I can, I can tell you right now that some of the things that have been said here tonight are disingenuous.
Okay. Well, I don't know whether they are or not, but.
Well, I can address that, but I.
That's something that we can do through written means, a proper assessment of what this actually says, but it's not really something we can deal with in this meeting. And I think the answer to that is, is that that's the legal opinion that I have. We are going to vote on this on its merits tonight, and we've already made, I think, perfectly reasonable suggestions about the way forward. The way forward, I think, is a text amendment. If you have something different from that, and a judge tells us to do something different, that will be a different argument, and I won't be making it, okay? But I'm here, and I'm under advisement from staff, professional staff, from our legal advisors, we, that is exactly the position that we're in.
And when you and I had an exchange just a moment ago, I think you made it clear, any denial would not be based on anything in this letter, that would be based on the state of the code.
Yeah.
That's what I heard you say.
That's, that's my intent.
Yeah. Can we take a recess for twenty minutes?
Yes, we can take a recess for ten minutes.
That's fine.
Yeah, I could do a motion for that, I move that we recess for ten minutes.
There's, I mean, can we move on to other business and then come back to this, or?
We can.
We have another piece of business.
Okay, well, let's move on to the business, ten minutes, we'll come back and redo it, we don't need to recess, okay? So, moving on to the business. Consider Discuss Acts on the Draft Water Resource Element to be Sent to the Maryland Department of the Environment for Sixty-Day Review. Kenner?
Yeah, so, I'll try to do this really quickly, so, the draft of the water resource element is being presented for review and approval, then be sent to the Maryland Department of Environment for a sixty-day review. So just real quickly, the water resource element, it's a state-required element in the comp plan. The updated version that's being worked on right now is an effort by the county of all the municipalities, to get one document that everyone can adopt together. Just real quickly, the purpose of this document is to evaluate the water supply, wastewater supply, public stormwater systems, to ensure that projected availability and capacity and projected demand. So then, that information is used to inform future comprehensive planning efforts and things like that. The W R E also helps us establish goals and action items that municipalities can aim for in order to best address issues for their specific water, wastewater, and stormwater systems. So again, each, right now, each municipality is being asked to approve this current draft version to be sent for the sixty-day review. Following that, the county will coordinate some public hearings, and then, you know, any revised versions of the plan that be brought back for approval, and then ultimately recommendations for approval to the mayor and town council. So quickly, looking at the information that's in the W R E, so the capacity projections, they were based on a certain point, a certain time, so basically the methodology they've used was a full build-out of the twenty twenty-three water and super service area, using twenty twenty-two zoning, and then other specific methodology developed by the Department of Environment, which some admittedly above my head, how they got all that. But the important information is that current projections for the Freedom Area System show the water capacity is available to meet the demand, based on a full build-out of the water service area. And we know that since Sykesville served by the Freedom Area System, and we don't have our own municipal system, this plan doesn't offer any specific action items for our town to incorporate, aside from a continued coordination with the county when updating the comp plan. Other municipalities that do have their own systems have more specific action items to address deficiencies in their own systems, but since we don't have our own system, we, you know, we're, it's a little bit easier for us. Wastewater, there is a potential deficit of about eighty-seven thousand six hundred gallons of wastewater per day, based on a full build-out, but again, there's no specific action item for us. The county can take some steps, including negotiations with the state to increase allocations, and then fixing infill and infiltration problems as well, that make it more difficult for actual wastewater to be treated. And then regarding stormwater, so this is management of public stormwater systems, so again, public systems, not systems or private developments. Public stormwater systems aren't expected to be a limiting factor in land use decisions moving forward. The county and the town work together, we have a federal permit that we work on, and we use that permit. It requires, it's a permit that's required for discharge, basically into public waterways, so our municipal system is required to hold that federal permit and then compliance with and be compliant with the federal regulations based on that permit. So basically our action items are just continue to work with the county on compliance with all federal regulations. And then a few additional stormwater action items that this, that the WRE mentions that were going to strip from our comp plan, so things that we're already anticipating doing. These include incorporating green infrastructure into downtown infill and other town projects, as well as updating our code requirements and more robust stormwater management best practices. So again, planning commission is being asked to vote on approval of the WRE draft documents that will be sent for 60-day review. I provided summary documents that the county gave to us. I mentioned that the full document was available upon request, but it was 300-plus pages of highly technical information, so we were told that we didn't have to provide that at this point if we didn't want to. So again, this is just a draft that is, we're recommending that the draft be sent to the state so the state can make edits and changes and then send it back to the county and then go from there.
Do we need a motion for that?
We do need a motion, yeah.
Give the motion.
Could I ask a question before we get in? So looking at the eight-page document, not the 300-page one, where it says plus 887,000 for freedom for, I think, the water, does that mean we need extra capacity of 887,000?
Yes.
And then is that made up by, within the county, by all the negatives? Is that how that process works, so that we have an abundance of capacity?
So I, again, I'm not fully personal how the whole methodology does, that you determine these numbers, but it's my understanding that basically our system isn't impacted in other ways by other municipal systems, so we just have, we have more capacity available in our system than, than we need based on a full build-out of the area that the Freedom System services.
So that, so the plus 887 means we're over capacity in our Freedom District area?
Correct, based on the full build-out of the area that the Freedom System services, we would have that additional capacity available.
Okay. And then for stormwater, we're under by 87,000 gallons, is that right?
For wastewater?
Waste, yeah, for sewer, I'm sorry, for sewer.
Yeah, and again, this information, and you are correct, we would be under what would be needed by 87,000 daily gallons. And this is based on a full build-out, this is based on current conditions.
And that's based on a master plan for the Freedom District, correct?
Correct, yeah. It's based on the full Freedom District build-out.
So the water, we're in good shape, is it sewer or not?
Sewer, we're still in, I wouldn't say we're in bad shape, we're just not in great shape.
We're not, we're not in a place where we meet all of the capacity needs by doing this. So that, it could limit some build-out at some point.
Yeah, potentially.
Okay.
Anything else? No, that being said, I move that we approve the draft water resource element to be sent to the Maryland Department of Environment for the required 60-day review. Do we have a second there?
Second.
10 seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Gentlemen, you ready to carry on?
That was perfect timing, by the way. We got to the other.
I missed eight. We missed the signing word at the front. It's miserable, though.
Okay, it's apparent to us that, based on our discussions, that there's, the commission believes there's no other alternative than to deny the application as before you. We want to make sure that that denial includes a series of things, so that should we decide to appeal this, all of those things are on the record. There are things that we've all talked about tonight, so there's no surprises or anything. The first one is that you're denying the plan that was presented to you tonight. The second is that you're denying the possibility of alternative land use percentages that was discussed tonight, because you can't make any alternative discussion based on the existing PEC law.
Could, could you, so I, so I missed your argument there. Would you mind just like pretending I don't know anything about this and kind of like walk me through this argument of how this, the 2016 plan compares, the crux of your argument?
Yes. If we were to take, if I was to take a pair of scissors and cut these pieces out, okay, and drop them onto this plan, okay? And everything else was to remain the same, 90.57 gross acres is the area that we're considering, that we're taking out the roads, the right-of-way, and some lot inefficiencies and some other things, as we did on this plan, 16.1, 16.81 acres as the calculation for land use percentages, and that we would meet the open space in residential, but we would be under the office institution hotel, and we would be under the retail percentages, okay? That, that would be our proposed alternative to what we presented to you, okay? And you're saying that you can't make any decision regarding that because you're bound by...
We're bound by what we're bound by.
Exactly. But that we presented this...
How does he even add factor into that, having, having, since you don't retain ownership of that property anymore? That's one thing.
Yeah, okay, it's, from my perspective, the ownership of this is irrelevant to the concept plan, okay? These are the actual open spaces that were subdivided and dedicated as open spaces, community open spaces.
It's still part of the project.
And it's still part of the project. So this is an evolution. When we did this, when we did this, we didn't have the detail of what was going to be approved here. Now we have the detail of what's going to be approved. It's done, it's built. And so all of the open spaces that we are identifying here are open spaces on that approved set.
Sean, I think...
And they meet the requirements of the town's open space definition.
I think the other issue too, what Sean's proposing, is that the denominator in the land use percentage calculation of 90.57 acres would remain as it was in, in 2016. And when you do a master plan community, okay, you...
It evolves.
Yeah, it evolves, but your gross acreage should always...
Stay the same.
Stay the same. And I think, I, I think I heard general agreement on that, but I won't put words in anybody's mouth. But that's, that's what I think Sean was, I hope you were trying to get at, that's what I heard. That if what was submitted most recently for consideration, the percentages weren't accept, land use percentages were not acceptable, then let's revert to using 90.57 acres as the denominator in that calculation. And I believe we could give you the specific numbers if you so wish to put it in any motion.
I mean, they're part of the public record, you rent them off, so it's part of the public record. Does that address your question?
Yeah, that was very helpful, thank you.
That another aspect of the denial would be the definition of height, the 50 feet versus six stories. That another specific reason for the denial was the open space as it's shown here versus the open space as it was shown in the 2016 plan approval. 2016, where we...
Right, I get that, yeah, but I don't think that's what we're denying it for at this point. We're denying it on land use percentages. We're not addressing the height of the buildings and bulk or any of that.
But it's part of the staff report.
Yeah, but it's not, it doesn't have to be part of the motion.
So the purpose of this is to make sure that the record is complete here, so that should we decide to appeal it, as opposed to coming back for you, that all of these issues are ripe, that we don't get stuck in this quandary between the planning commission and, say for example, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or a court that, the court says, "Well, you never really, nobody ever discussed that, nobody ever opined on that." You have a staff report that specifically states that they recommend you use 50 feet, and we're saying it should be six, it should be six stories as identified in the PEC. You have a staff report that says you shouldn't use the open spaces that are shown on this July, or June 20th, I think, submittal, that it should be what was approved back in 2016. You just want to make sure all those issues are ripe. That's it. That's the whole purpose. And the, and the other issue is that the process, the alternative process for the modification of those land use percentages is, in your opinion, strictly available only through town council.
That's my understanding of it. Now, whether there's a route through variance of Board of Zoning Appeals or not, I'm not, I don't have the legal background and knowledge to understand whether that's true or not.
I appreciate that. I've been in your position. I understand exactly that, you know, you have a specific role and, and you don't, you're not a lawyer, all that, that's great. All we want to do is we want to make sure that all of these issues are right.
Also the meetings.
Yes, and that finally, that we believe that the May meeting was a meeting separate and distinct from this meeting. So those are the things that we would like to make sure that are included in the denial, should you decide to deny this.
But we don't have to do that, we can simply deny it on one, one count.
I'm sorry?
We're on the record then.
I mean, you can be on the record for saying you want that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to put that in the motion at this particular point. We're quite within our rights to deny it based on, on that one thing, land use. Okay, so...
We're now on the record that...
But you're on the record about what you want, but whether that's what's appropriate is another matter, okay?
I can just address, just the question of the, is this a separate meeting?
Yes.
Or not? They can't bring you a proposal that is, I don't know a nice word for how inadequate it was. And then, and then when you tell them how inadequate it was and suggest that they come back with something that's not inadequate, they can't then use the fact that they submitted what was not remotely, not colorably, not, not, not anything that was satisfactory. They can't use their own conduct to then argue that that was the meeting and tag, you're it, and now, and now we're done. You can't have any more meetings. They made the situ, they created the situation that required a subsequent session.
Okay. My rebuttal to that is that it is typical with land use applications, as I started in the beginning, for applicants to meet, particularly on the biggest project in maybe the history of this town.
I would love that. Why haven't those meetings occurred? Because this is obviously a completely dysfunctional relationship.
They were, they were requested and, and, and they were denied, and, and so as I started in the beginning, that makes it very challenging to be as responsive as, as Levanne would like us to be. I, I think we could have sorted a lot of this out, embedded a lot of this in those meetings, and that's what happens. That's what happens in 99% of the land use applications I've made in 30 years.
Yeah, we completely missed the whole discussion. It's like, where, where's our opportunity to talk about the, like, the hyper-local market that's not reflected in the reports? Where's the opportunity for us to understand your motivations and dig into the studies? It's like, it's just...
And it's a, it's a, it's a separate issue, if I, if I may, it's a separate issue, but, you know, those market studies are very, they've been around for a while and have been presented before, and we're always happy to present them and discuss them again. I think they maybe fall out of the scope of what we're trying to do here, but I'm just merely suggesting that certainly meetings with staff, as is customary, would have, would have alleviated some of this, and I have a hard time hearing that we haven't been responsive when we've been denied the opportunity.
And Mr. Chairman, you mentioned some recommendations. I would suggest that could be a recommendation, that staff not deny meetings with the applicant. Create a hearing meeting with the applicant, or a pre-submittal meeting with an applicant.
Well, Mr. Bass, I don't know what the legal ramifications of all of this are. I don't know what the legal background is for it, I don't know the reasons for that, that denial, and so for me to recommend the course of action about which I have absolutely no knowledge at all would be ridiculous, so I'm not going to do it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Please do.
One of the things, you know, talking about denials of meetings, we have not held face-to-face meetings with the client or with the applicant, sorry. However, we have repeatedly said that any kind of questions in writing that they want to submit to staff that we can then answer for them has always been open. As a matter of fact, there have been several back and forths throughout this process. There hasn't been very many of those, but we are certainly, certainly happy to continue those kinds of discussions in writing. The reason one of those, the reason we've, we've made that request to the applicant, and we've said that numerous times, because there is ongoing litigation with this particular project, and we want to make sure that the communication is documented in a very specific way.
And, and, Mr., and may I, and I'm sensitive to that, I think we're all sensitive to that. We are happy to have legal counsel present at, at such meetings, which frankly was the case for a very long time in the run-up, going back to 2014. Dennis Hoover, the former town attorney, God rest his soul, was present, had to be present in more than half of our, our meetings, and we were in a much different, the discussions had a much different tenor and tone back then. So if, if the benefit of legal counsel was there before, I don't know why we can't use it to have meetings with the town.
I can't answer that.
I understand you can't, I'm just, for the record.
Pick the point for the record, but there, there are other powers that be that are beyond my pay grade to make those decisions.
Mr. Chairman, I get it, I get it.
Okay, good. Anything else, gentlemen, that you want to add to this at this particular point? No?
Just make sure that, real quickly, I just want to make sure that as identified in the staff report, should the applicant seek to come back in and resubmit a plan, a revised plan, to you for your August 4th meeting, that you are going to be meeting on August 4th and that we will be able to do that.
It would be a different plan.
Yeah, of course.
Because obviously this plan is probably not going to go anywhere based on the vote tonight, but it would be a different plan.
I just want to make sure...
At that point, it will be the first of two meetings, I suppose, to make a decision, because that's where we're at.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're not barred from resubmitting. Is it, is identified in the...
How could you ever be barred from resubmitting a concept of submitting? Thank you. I don't understand where that comment came from. Sorry, I don't, I don't get that one, Sean. But anyway, moving on, I'd like to get this, this dealt with, and I have a motion. I move that the planning commission deny the submitted concept plan for the Warfield site as presented due to inconsistencies between the plan and the Town of Sykesville zoning code regarding land use percentages and the application of multiple development parcel sizes. Furthermore, I move that the commission request that future concept plan submittals exclude changes to the use percentages on parcel ENF, indicate how the recreational space requirement in the PEC zone will be met, and explore alternative locations for retail service uses. A new concept plan may be submitted for consideration at any future planning commission meeting. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
10 seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Gentlemen, I wish you well, and I would like to spirit of cooperation, but we have to address those land use percentages before we can make decisions about a further concept plan. And how we go about doing that, I'll leave that to others to discuss. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to the meeting. Roger.
All right, so, talent, thanks.
Yeah, just a few quick things. So we had an HDC meeting recently in which the addition to the French Whisk was approved by HDC. I remember they brought up, not a plan you guys for approval, but just a, just a look at the comments, so HDC did approve that, so we do expect a site plan for that project to be submitted at some point soon.
Did anything change from the plan that was presented to us?
Yeah, now HDC asked for some additional information regarding materials and things like that, as far as the layout that was presented to, to you guys, it should be the same. At that same HDC meeting, there was approval from HDC specifically for the demolition of the warehouse building at 7452 Springfield Avenue, that's the yellow building, the damn shop.
That's the one they were going to make into appointments?
Yes, yes, it's pretty elaborate driveway.
After, after some structural engineering was done, we had some reports and, you know, they indicated that reuse of that building would be very, very difficult, and it's not really built up to any sort of standard to make it a commercial structure. So they helped to demo that and then eventually come back with a site plan proposal for redevelopment of that lot. The final plans for the enclave subdivision have been submitted, and then, so we've sent those to our engineers at KCI so they can review them. The county's going through a review as well. We anticipate that the county reviews for the final plan shouldn't take as long as the preliminary reviews. And again, those final plans will, should look very, very similar to the preliminary plans, though you guys have already approved, but there will be a point at that respect and file as well for a final approval. And we might have a, a meeting prior to that where we can show you guys the final plan documents as well, just here for everybody.
What, do you have a timeframe on that?
I'm not sure what the timeframe is. I think a lot of it's going to hinder, as always, a stormwater review, because they still have to go through one more.
So a little while, probably.
Yeah, so again, it shouldn't be a long supplemental stormwater review, at least from what I was told, but that sort of, but we just got that submitted, just a second. And then I'm sure everyone has noticed that the parking lot down on the south end is pretty much done, striked and then ready to roll, so a little bit behind.
Looks good.
A little bit behind schedule, but I think done, or...
Yeah, there's an area in the back that's still to be paved, but they might hold off on that until the work that is proposed at Sykesville Station.
until the work that is proposed at Sexual Station gets done, so.
All right, that's all we got, anything else anybody wants to bring up? Nope, in which case I move that we adjourn, seconded by Ted, call of favor?
Aye.
Good to go, all right.